Wait for that clock, for some reason it's one minute off. Yeah, the wonderful me.
These people call where our town will be in your town to meet for September tenth twenty twenty four. I'm a six month, yeah. I play the evening spirit of why. I can see the republic which stands foundation under God. Thank you for waiting for the many minutes to see the council meeting. Everybody follow any comments. Did anyone sign up? Oh, actually. The enders, but. Okay, well, yeah, expected place on the agenda, so we're gonna. We'll move right into the ways committee presentation, uh, we have the annual girls to, uh, present something. If you guys have done anything. How much your names and, um, introduce yourselves so that I'll be able to have you guys on through the record.
I'm Hi, Andrew. Hi, Anna, Andrew, and we both live at sixty, oh, good sleep. We are sweet to Olympia and we go at ors and we volunteer a lot at the picnic breakfast policy this landing the train station. And then we are here to to present our request to form linear active meeting committee. So, um. As you can see, our mission statement is very similar to the previous one, but we added emphasis on civic responsibility and endangerment. Next slide please. So here's our past. Next slide. Our ownership in our environment is so friendly and while looking as important, we instead of the focus on community among residents and educating teams on local government. We as a committee will have three kinds of. First will focus on members learning about how our government is run. And then another will be important rules and regulations and how we can create a mutual understanding between generations. Next slide. So we would like to also put on an annual signature event, just like the linear tree board. Um, so after tonight, our signature event, we will need to get approval from town council and we will be citizens from time staff. Our budget would be this purpose event and if we will run any other ventures, our committee takes for future years. And then our way members will staff the event and promote on our webpage, social media, posters and more. But rolling consideration means that waking many members with it in terms premier access to volunteer opportunities by time of invention. This we feel will help draw teams to joining the committee because when they find out that joining will help them earn by future hours, still have more reason to join. The volunteer liaison will be a member that people go to first and reaching out to volunteers and will notify other members of an opportunity. We have some proposed activities we would like to bring back to our signature event. We feel that having teams running committees around town or bigger events like the Halloween people. Or ones that are entirely hosted by ourselves will show especially to older generations that we care about the overall well being of our town. And then we can also reach out to volunteer groups like key clubs at older high schools when extra volunteers are needed. Next slide, please. So for our committee composition, we will limit our members to only kids who live in the town. And the reason we decided to only limit to town residents because they represent the tax paying families. And since there are a lot of teens who live here, we would open up our committee to anyone who lives under three, four, seven, eight, six to share volunteer opportunities and educate them on local government. All of our members must be high school students, so we are committed and we are responsible. And at a second, we need local on our bylaws regarding the penance departments and the dates and times of the meetings. Next slide, please. This is our plan for recruiting members. We strongly believe that our best bet to gain experience to join the committee is to create a new way Instagram page and spread the word through it through posts and sharing it count with others. We would also like better to add a big exact in creating a website on the town website so there are. Information in a centralized place for people who are interested. We also have a road coach at on ours that is a writer at the West Orange Times Observer. And we could reach out to her for getting an ad into the, um, into the observer or also just the whole article on it. Then we can also ask around schools, clubs or sports with people that would be interested in joining. If they aren't, we can ask them to spread the word about it. Also, we could ask high schools that draw from the three, four, seven, eight, six, seven, to put on a poster or big notice to their key clubs or student governments about the committee. Next slide. So we will have to discuss with town council and other staff that feature means what our budget for each year will be and then again approve. Our budget will be used, we will design shirts and wear them at all volunteer members in any place we are representing the way committee. Our budget will fund our advertisements, including now the admin set or the old observer posters up in nineteen eighty or pay for any other programs used to note what the way committee is doing. And our budget will be used to create for our designated linear lease department officer at a signature event and any other we put on. And then it supplies instruction we use. This and above are the several resources and assets we will use and town staff can make sure we use them in compliance with sunshine laws. Next slide. So for our timeline activation, first we met with town staff and now we're here. And we've given some thought to the agenda of our first three meetings and we'll judge from there. We want to give some thanks to former way committee members and Grace Olivia for finding us idea. We also want to thank town council for letting listening to us and hopefully helping us make it. Thank you so much. If you have any other questions, we'd like to hear them that.
Counsel, any questions?
I don't know, but I think I'll be asking questions in the future.
Oh, I'm glad. Thank you, thank you so much.
What's that?
Yeah, we will please start assuming that this meeting, so recruiting members and then hopefully by October have our meeting. Mine's set and cover first one.
Mary, can't appoint a way to me liaison.
Sure. Tonight, um, we. Freshly, we leave budget line and order.
It's already my spending threshold and I've worked with C T L, so we'll be able to believe on their program for this just a year.
Great. So at this time of week, will we ask for a volunteer? And I very much like that you added the. Government component, not obviously because of what we do, but it needs more and more work. Really understand where you guys can make a difference and always tell everybody come and actively aid, ask, represent, we often receive. Can you do a lot of your efforts and it's been fun watching your family grow up, you guys.
They came here.
Yes, it's so true. So, but they're not that small anymore. We're proud of you guys and glad you take it on the session, thanks so much. Hang on, six, seven. Yes, can you come to the microphone now and give us your name and address? Absolutely.
Um, when you feel you still have a limit, four, six, okay, we still have a chunk here, so. Uh, I don't know if this is appropriate to this question, but I just had a suggestion for the meeting or thought that they need to spend responsible middle schoolers that live in the area, but. My son grows at the lawyers and he really wanted to come tonight and. So maybe some responsible middle schoolers that he's going to participate in as well, so I'm just.
Yeah, we'll let you guys get started and and you guys can entertain some some different. Next up, we have a special presentation for Parks and Recreation, making number of recommendations. So I've been curious for. Why don't you get the, it's, yeah, oh, gosh, you're eating, so I know it was two thousand eight. And I really got to know you when I read rocks and I assume I remember. From your house, we named him Sunday Avenue. All usual suspects are there. I came in and I said, I'm not the town council. Turned around, I started leaving, I clear I had it all, made everybody seem to like me. And then as I turned ahead to the door, Tracy asked, what do you think about the town? So I ain't saying nothing, that's right, we won't say anything else on that. But that was our little deal that we break down. But today, this is about you, so. In recognition of more than twenty years of service to the town of linear Parks and Recreation Committee. The town council presents this plaque of appreciation for Tracy Mitchell. Your dedication in volunteering countless hours to the committee as a member. Heading up playground revitalization and grants, assisting with the Halloween festival, five and ten day runs. Among the latest, that best and so much more. The town council, residents and staff appreciate your dedication. Due to this tenth day of September twenty fifty four. And a plaque endeavor really say, uh, all popcorn balls, all the efforts, all of your Halloween decorations coming from your house to the front.
Yeah.
So. Any parts of appreciation and I'm giving the opportunity and anyone else in Parks and Recreation and may wish to say something.
I guess I'm going to say thank you very much, it's been an honor. I have really enjoyed it and I think it's also something that's cool to say about our town is we're all in it together. I've always had big support from town, public works, W P V, everybody, the mayor, I mean, he'll show up pretty good. Yes. Me and T has been a great liaison for our team, so. And all my girls that work on it, it's it's been so great, I've met so many friends. I love it, I love the sounds like we all do. And that's right, and I'll still help them, I'll always be there. But anyways, thank you very much. Oh, wait, I have one more thing to say.
Oh.
I forgot to thank the most important, this guy, like his thing, who showed up for everything when I needed his help. Or babysat kids when they were tiny, but he'd be there at six o'clock, anything I needed to do, I was moving. Tables or helping me serve coffee or whatever, so I want to thank him and just.
So I did not sign in and I don't know if I have to say my address, but I mean, um, and yeah, I just want to say really first thing, you had somebody that is a parent in part of the right. Uh, I would never have been on there if it wasn't for Tracy for asking me, so. Uh, she has been such a big part of it, it's going to be a big, big hole to fill. And Halloween is going to be very interesting without you, but she will be there in spirit, but Tracy, thank you so much for all that you've done, I know our committee. Would be lost without you and we appreciate that you can still be around and help us along the way.
Absolutely, so thank you, thank you.
So Tracy, a key point in this community is what separates us and people from other. Towns and communities is that everybody does their share, they don't have to do it all. This is actually true. That's what makes us special, makes us better than we all do in our own way. And it's one of the things that I'm proud. On a new business, uh, tonight we have, I believe, one set, yes, one set of meetings for our town council regular meeting and state office, uh, August thirteenth, twenty four. Questions approved, councilperson Dave and Sam. But second, councilperson that. Questions, comments or concerns, council. See none, again, buddy, councilperson sir.
Aye.
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 Thank you, council. Next up, resolution or nonsense for approvals, uh. It's a resolution, uh, twenty twenty four dash zero five of the town council. But it's not familiar for a document of soundability, versions, disaster readiness, personnel. Stat arguments approval and we brought with the, I think, sort of site into the presentation on this item.
Right, when going through all the lines of items that we need to make sure that they're compliant with the, uh, uh, that we didn't have. Policies and procedures that identify specifically for, uh, disaster preparedness and, uh, emergency response. So we worked with public works, we worked with, uh, Gray Robinson on creating this policy to make sure that we can check that box off, so when future storms that come to the town over there. And it's sort of a disaster area that we had that documentation and we go ahead and check that box off.
It's a lot of swine force counter later, maybe to get foreign version is taking that there. Disaster as well as, as well as just any.
Right.
Any questions, councilor?
Just one clarification, is this for natural disasters, storms, um. And the money that you would be asking for would be all reimbursed from the, uh, submitted.
Comments, questions? Right, see none, no questions. Questions, ladies, councilor? Anything, councilperson? Questions, comments or concerns, council? See none, again, what councilperson needs?
Aye.
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 Aye. Resolution twenty four dash zero five, passage against. Next, I M D is contracts and grants, this is a full of bid twenty twenty three dash, which is a three visited good fact of the place. Uh, West Second Avenue roadway drainage and water utility improvements. This is an award requested Cap Cart construction, you know, five and five hundred thirty eight thousand dollars. Six hundred and sixty eight dollars, uh, staff recommend this group, hundred and present.
Yes, sir. So back in November of twenty twenty three, we took the West Second Avenue out for bid once we had received confirmation from F D E M and FEMA that we could move forward with that bid. As you all know, that bid came in above what we had initially anticipated as a budget. When that happens, you have to actually go back to F D E M. Request a budget increase and also whether or not they will allow us to accept one bid. For the bid package. So we have been waiting because they send it back through the process because they want to make sure the B C A is met, so the benefits, benefit cost analysis has to be done again. That's what took so long. So when I came back from my vacation, we were still waiting and hadn't heard anything from F D E M. So I called our representative and I said, listen, I said, we've been waiting for this project a long time. We've been getting a lot of requests to move this along, where are we exactly with FEMA's approval? So the representative told me, I've been trying to convince your engineer to go ahead and move forward because we think everything's going to be fine. And my response back to her was, I don't like it when you say everything's going to be fine. So what she told me then, yes, but what she told me then was they had actually had a conversation and verbal confirmation from FEMA. That they are going to approve it, they're just finalizing that document on their end and will send it forward. So they wanted us to move forward with starting conversations with the the only bidder on this project so that we're not continuing to be behind the eight ball. So this evening, what we're asking council to do is approve us to move forward with negotiations and awarding that bid to Pat Cart. And then we will come back to you with the FEMA agreement when we have that, but this way we can get all of our ducks lined up and be ready to go. Oh, yes, and I'm so sorry, I did receive a formal letter from Cat Cart agreeing to hold the price from back in. This in November of twenty twenty three, so that's a good thing too.
So we're going to do this preemptively, so we advance and ready rock and roll, but. People not spending five million dollars. How many people from that then? Um, and then everyone's. Here and understanding how our match percentage is brought some.
Yes.
Any additional questions, comments or? Just one further. I've slept since then, so I can't remember, how do we advertise this?
Out on demand storm, we had to actually, um, put it out in the newspaper as well, we had to follow the, um, state and federal guidelines on advertising this. Yes, sir.
Interesting, especially for, I do understand half of any of our projects would be a million bucks. It's a little million bucks, I would say, and sometimes that doesn't win the needle these days. Uh, but I thought this might be right. But again, uh, and and well done to get you approval, make sure that we're in a situation for. Versus B C A is. Any additional questions? I see none, will you be voting for a group? Question approved, uh, it's free to answer. Hey, uh, are, uh, voting for a group, councilperson that and second. Additional questions, comments or concerns? See none, have been voting with councilperson two? Aye.
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 Approval of bid, uh, twenty twenty three dash share, please, and just. Thank you guys, you're hardworking on this, I know it takes you a while in this pursuit of the insurance to get here.
It does, but we have movement, that's great.
Super excited, especially after something like yesterday. Where you just see the. There are a lot of, a lot of the person needs to be working on, we're just finding that's no one free. But you can clearly see also where we haven't made any major adjustments in projects and we. Next up is other considerations, sign one, this is the beginning of your vision zero report. Stat recommends approval, I believe we had a presentation on this item last month. Um, is there any vision presentation?
No, this is just a formal request for Metro Plan that you guys approved the report and so they need a formal.
Councilperson that, I'll change any questions there, I'm wishing to approve the vision zero for. Wish to approve the councilperson that, I believe, for second? Second, councilperson. Questions, comments or concerns, council? See none, have been voting with councilperson.
Aye.
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 Aye. Your vision zero report, um, passage against. One great question that I pause. Um, so all of the projects that are, we can submit those to Metro Plans. Uh, funding tip. I found this reverse sort of give a lot of.
Yes, yes, we can, and again, we did this so that we could also pursue those on our own if we wanted, this was the step we had to take to do it.
Possibly, um, I'm not sure I did this one right, Robert and I spoke about this before the meeting, this is, uh, I don't even too very in our local agreement with sounding in your county school board. Or our school resource officer. For a one year contract with Robert, I believe that we were waiting for some CPs. Ran a request to be tabled this evening.
Yeah, it should be tabled, and the reason why is that. The costs that are associated with the contract itself, um, are way below. What is the industry standard for police officers, especially to the five year police officer as far as the, uh, the minimum requirement for S R O. Now, no way is this taking S R O from Winnebago industry, right? Uh, the negotiations are still going on, but they were looking at a three year agreement, which is a minimal escalator, which doesn't match today in market. Uh, so. The chiefs all collectively agreed to go ahead and continue negotiations with Orange County Public Schools. However, Orange County and Orlando Police Department have signed the agreement that was presented to them before. But the other municipalities have not signed this agreement because they still want to negotiate. Basically on what Osceola has done as far as how much we need, uh, they're providing to the local agencies that are covering those schools. So, Orange County Public Schools, uh, did not like the one year agreement, they still want forward to three year agreement, but it's just another interesting pause.
I think that, uh, something that everyone may not know is that. Since we began doing this. Seven years until. That's such a. I bet. This strategy that she. But on this table or?
Oh, so it was a nice, uh, council meeting, uh, hopeful of a city from O T P S and the chief by.
What is the amount for me?
Uh, currently, I believe, seventy two thousand this year and then eighty two thousand after that and then ninety two thousand after that.
And just to be clear, this last stop, the school resource officer can be here because we speak to things.
Correct.
Gives us the opportunity. Here investing for for our citizens. Robert, is it the same way involved S R O's or just they're only negotiating the market if they got to appear?
Uh, it's going to be as far as the each municipality.
Yeah.
All the municipalities but for Orlando and Orange County, those two have actually signed the agreement that was proposed to them. All the other municipalities, their chiefs have agreed that the costs that are associated with providing a service are more than what they're. Asking for, going to pay, so they want to collectively go back and bargain with Orange County Public Schools to try to get that cost up. But they did not, Orange County Public Schools did not agree to the amount, nor did they agree to the, um, just the one year, they won the three year contract.
Questions for Robert? And also appreciate your flexibility on that, I, um, we wanted to get it on, but it just didn't quite, the timing didn't quite work out with me. Mayor and council reasons on reports, I would like to go ahead and make sure that everyone is aware of our nine. Six P M on September eleventh. It'll last about thirty five minutes or so, love for everyone to come, it's, uh. It's a really nice opportunity. Got a great guest speaker, uh, general, it was actually in the Pentagon, as I said. Um, that's a tremendous story and a lot to share. So, um, for the senior to be there, um, if the weather is bad, we move inside, but hopefully tonight. We'll sneak it in. The additional council.
Oh, thank you, mayor, so, uh, Robert and I continue to request, uh, traditional backup data from, uh, for a reading of the contractor. Or, uh, they're refusing to give us any.
Let us know we can do this.
Score reservation for the stands of this month and then, uh, last week, um, I'd like to play your committee, uh. General navigation for your standing in the west or community meeting on Thursday, six o'clock in Heller Hall, um, at Burnard, if you guys have kind of find out, so I'm on the airport, uh, come on to the.
See there? Any question back?
Um.
Big events to that?
It's like the. Um, and then if our party would be by the net, um, then you know, you've been in meeting for a few, few months, but we, um, have a few new vendors and. Say on that.
Well, thank you.
Um, so we had our first staff meeting at the school, um, and it's more or less just the, uh, my laws and my every bit of questions about the bridge. Like that for Robert, um.
We get the questions about the bridge, which I checked for Robert, um, to give them an update. Uh, Butler Chain of Lakes advisory board event last month. They did ask questions about the movies that they're around. And the explanation that was given was that the third island movies have been given a long leash. Uh, so whenever our water levels are low, they're going, uh, they said they actually had divers going to put the anchors that they put into the ground, that twisted into the ground, and the annual, they're very deep. But that's just how much length that broke there. So as the water changes up and down, they're either going to function any part or like now, then I need to go over the buck. I don't know. That was the answer I was given.
It's like a divine intervention.
Yeah.
Okay, so they all moved all the way to shore of this, like, that's their, that's their story.
That's my party. I mean, I didn't cooperate, unfortunately, so.
You.
We do have another meeting.
All in the exact same.
Right, right. So it's.
Amazing.
We have another meeting next. So I will, I want to know that it's on the basis.
Or we can just move it back out.
Alright.
If they have a long leash, they were.
So, and then three four, I mean, we have a little meeting next week, or this week, actually.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you for checking on that. I did have a quick question. So I know that we're, um, on the ridge, and I know that you guys have been working on that. But.
Hey.
Total motivation down there. Um, you know, what? What else is that? I mean, obviously water staying together, but it just seems to be a place that continues to be bad when everything else isn't good. Um, not that everything isn't good.
Well, we have, we've done a lot of work out there, and it's much better than it used to be. However, there is that steep slope that comes off of that top area. So when we were walking with the engineers originally and working through the plan for the ward trail and the pedestrian bridge, I noted that to the engineer, so that's one of the issues we have to fix. We have to fix that steep slope that comes through there. Um, there's some other issues that we're looking into over there as well that we're, that we're working with code enforcement on to address as well.
Yeah, because I think there needs to be some harder ones, ready to leave it. I think I'll stop that, but I don't even. Alright, I do appreciate what you guys are doing, and I know it's, it's ever. Yeah, we also probably have that area paid, correct?
Yes, sir. Just waiting on funds for us to go ahead and pay that. I know we had a lot of H N G P projects and FEMA projects, uh, are taking a little bit of a priority because of the funding. Uh, but I do plan on talking on that as soon as possible. We're still waiting on one property to do the, uh, river roadway swap. Uh, once I have that, then we already have the design hundred percent complete. It's just another funding.
Understood. Um, yeah, it's just, and it's a difficult situation for everybody. And it was super high maintenance. Thank you guys for trying to stay on top of it. Do really appreciate that, because it's mature from all the, all the parents, all the kids, try to get through common ways.
My staff has been instructed, they have to be there with a street sweeper every morning now.
Yeah. Two inches. That is.
That's gross.
Number two. Uh, well, I don't know how to explain it, but maybe it was right there, next time again. We've had a couple of long meetings hit there, but, uh, very interested, excited to be back in the mall. Um, had a charrette here yesterday.
Yeah, last night.
Last night. And, um, great job, lot in bullet, and based on the town center area, which has been public, um, twenty-four public inlet. Which we, with some suggestions, hung long replay last night, subject to discussion. But, uh, in my opinion, pretty decent start. I mean, the guy who pushed it there, it's like, yeah, you guys are ready for this. You had a lot of ideas I didn't think about. So, uh, once again, publicly showed that on point four. You give their input, uh, it's critical. I think that, uh, it's no direction, and I think that, uh, I don't know what we'll do without a lot of stress and wondering, blah, 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 stuff. Discuss bathroom, obviously, uh, John gave a great presentation about. I guess not probably any of this presentation on bathroom situation, or there was just great. Um, of course, the bathroom portal wasn't down here now, but now this is already calling the analysts that, line reading, you know, hey. Their bathroom, on their bathroom.
Go, go in, let's go.
Yeah, so, uh, I think this the, please be designing this, the group of baskets. If I go like this, the twenty maybe that the sign of food, put it back, it's small, it's ready to sit. Well, I think we have a good design and will. So, what do you want, absolutely, open for suggestion. They're gonna have free sport, everything you can brought, whatever they want, sort of maybe there, sort of, to be good. Thank you. If there's links.
All good, uh, we're looking to be, they're riding along, they're, they're ready to sit there. I, here we, here we are, in the planning, five already, too. Nice, uh, this is a, looks good, good thing, too, so we should have an announcement soon enough. Uh, keeping that off.
What's the date of the plan?
Six, first Friday.
Is there? My, they're teaching stuff. Staff reports.
Yes, sir. Do you know, keep in mind, me and, uh, D C next, or actually tomorrow, uh, through Friday for W T Fox graduation, and we have the academy. So we'll be out, but we'll still be in communication with staff. Uh, cops and bobbers unfortunately had to be postponed due to the, uh, lake levels. Uh, and due to lake levels in conjunction with Orange County, uh, we're gonna go ahead and close the boat rents until those lake levels, uh, drop down to where it's not creating any more property binge. The, again, the town square charrette we have planned for September twenty fourth, we've already worked with wage trim on a design. Go ahead and get that out there and make sure that we advertise that for that. Our final budget here is gonna be on September sixteen. We have D R B on September seventeen. Uh, the Dream Center Open House, that's one of the items the foundation helps support and fund is on the eighteen. And then for the Shondalock annexation, uh, we have three public meetings on September nineteenth, twenty-third, and thirtieth. So it's gonna be a month full of meetings, and we do have our, uh, food trucks this, this month, and it is going to be, um, National Night Out for the police farm.
And have me know all these needs.
Yes, sir.
I.
Yes, sir. So we do have some good news relative to we presented to you about West Second Avenue earlier this evening, and now we've received Magnol, third Magnolia and Bessie from the, um, F D E M. So we'll be coming to you in October to move that agreement forward. That will give us the opportunity to hopefully bid Bessie and Butler together, which makes it a larger project and hopefully gain better interest in the project and, and better pricing as well. So just wanted to let you all know, I know we've been eagerly waiting for all of that, and now it's starting to come to fruition. So I did want to give that good news, um, especially in light of the, the rainstorms we've been having. Um, we have had the backtalk company in here yesterday, today, and they're coming back again tomorrow. Um, so we're making sure that those systems are cleaned out. My crew has been on the roads past two days, pretty much nonstop. They are clearing out all of those washouts and, and helping to get that sorted out. Um, we're meeting with the, um, Kimblehorn engineers tomorrow to look at Oakdale and Ninth area to see if there's any suggestions they might have for us on that, um, moving forward, um, as a temporary fix until Bessie can be installed. So we're making good progress on, on all of this, and you know, it's, it, it's, it could be worse, is what I want to say. We've made some great strides, and given the rain we've had, we've done well.
So I want to make sure that we commend your team. Dave, I completely make sure they hear this. I'll do my best to hear that as well, but I see now, I don't care at night. And keep the roads as safe as we can, especially the washout areas, they're out there in the rain, you can break them through. Uh, drainage areas, make sure we mark those areas that. Shell. When you get six or seven or eight, just bring dirt roads in two hours, this, this is what happens. You can mitigate until the catalyst, it's just more wire than you can accept. So, uh, I ask residents to be patient with that. It's something that we've committed to as a town, to have these dirt roads. Working to us, but we come, this is drawbacks. This is that, so.
And one of the other issues that comes along with this because of all the rain is because we have dirt roads, we're bringing in dirt material for these roads. Well, that is also saturated. So when that happens, we have to wait till that dries out to get loads of that material in as well. So just asking for everyone's patience. My team is working steadily on it. We're working to get that material in here as fast as we can.
And it's a, and then the materials we're using now are far superior to what we have used in the past. Nothing is perfect, but definitely some look a lot better. Wire will do. Despite some of our best efforts, we'll continue to work on it, not good enough, continue to make those strides and complete those projects, but just ask their patience. It's, it rains every day, and I think this is pretty challenging. It's not fair for everybody to get in front of this one.
That is.
Anything more?
No, you're gonna hear a funny one shortly, but I will go ahead and do the police chief's report with respect to that dispatch agreement last month that you had approved because I said there was some unusual public records language in it that needed to come out. And the day after the town council meeting, of course, was sent back clean version with that unusual language you use. So now it's just standard public record language, which says that we're going to be able to take care of it. That's all I have. So that's what I think that you were expecting, chief.
Yeah, we wanted to hear back on that, so. That actually got taken care of. Appreciate it, Senator.
I do.
Alright, council, anything additional? Pretty good, they were. See none, we may close, our dinner town council meeting at six forty-two.